Hey Eric.
How's it going on? How much, how we doing?
Good, how are you tonight?
Good, excuse me. Was that Ben's dad last week? Was it his dad? So I don't like the heart of that person. When did that happen? Last week?
The June 2nd, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called Order. The first item of business tonight is a continuation of a prior workshop on the proposed amendment for vacant buildings. And Mr. Cousins, Mr. Bowden?
So based on your, based on your feedback from the last meeting?
So what we had done is we listened to your feedback and we appreciated it. We did update the fee structure to put a maximum cap on, that cap gets maxed out at around two years. So I think that we're not going to have those exuberant costs just reoccurring and going up. I did change the vacant building definition. It was brought up because we didn't have, you know, a clear number of days. So we put a 60-day notification timeframe, or consecutive of uninhabited anyway.
Sorry Chris, Eric, can you just pull up that ordinance and we'll walk through some of those changes?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, the way that it read it defined a vacant building as a building unoccupied for 60 days, but then it allowed for 60 days to file the notice. I think we talked to you, Mr. Mayor, about that last week and it was unclear exactly when they had to file, so we've corrected that. We still have the 60-day timeframe before it's determined to be vacant, but then, once it is meeting that definition, then there's 10 days to file that, that notice.
So one of the, one of the things that I did want to do, the, the fee increases were based on, you know, every time they got a new permit, it would increase. Something that I think changes here with this, with this language is, you know, if a building is a vacant building, gets put back into service, and eventually goes back to a vacant building again, it's not going to incur those fees. I'm not sure if that was okay with that intent, but I thought that it provided an opportunity for, you know, things do happen sometimes, so.
I think one of, one of the other significant changes was that we've clarified that it's not just demolition that would allow somebody to get their vacant building, abandoned building out of that status. It's a permit in place for repairs, demolition, or, or updates that would resolve the violation. So no matter what type of permit it is, if you apply for that permit and you pursue that work under the timeframes that the permit allows, then you stop incurring those registration fees.
Yeah, and the inspection standards were changed. I really wanted to differentiate between abandoned and vacant, and it provides a mechanism for somebody to take an abandoned building and turn it into a vacant building, which is going to provide, you know, the neighborhoods a safer building for those responders, aren't going to have to worry as much if they have to enter these, these properties because we've been in them, they're properly secured, and they meet all the criteria in Chapter 12. I think it's going to be a basic inspection that's, that's, you know, kind of a checklist-based inspection that's going to be able to provide these, these details for the property owners and we should be able to get pretty simple compliance once they convert from abandoned to vacant.
Yeah, I think after going through that process, it also means that we have good contact information that's accurate and current for those owners to respond to any issues that come up as well. With that, happy to answer any other, any questions?
Questions from the council? Council Milk?
So let's say I'm a, I'm a business, I've got a 15-year lease, and after seven years, the people that leased it for 15 years decide they don't want to do business anymore, but keep paying the lease in that building. That's now, and it's empty, but it's being paid for, and I say, I just don't want to put anybody in it. What's that fee in there here? I'm trying to understand what, because to me, that's a vacant building, and if I own the building and I'm keeping it up to the standards and code, why am I getting charged anything? I'm paying taxes, if I want to leave my building empty, why can't I leave my building empty? Or, you know, a house that if I give you all my information and all that, why can't I just leave my house empty?
Okay. You, you could leave it empty. Now, that would be if it's not being used at all. So, I mean, if you had that leased building and they were using it for storage for the remainder of the lease, and there's somebody there occasionally, it may not qualify as being vacant. But what we've tried to do as well is establish a fee for vacant buildings that are not abandoned that's less than what an abandoned building.
So I guess I'm, what, in that situation, let's say it's, that's maybe absurd, seven years, a year. Unless, there's going to be a fee to have that building empty for a year? Even though it's paid for, even though the building is secure and all that, I'm still have to pay the city a fee to have an empty building? That's secure and paid for and, and this police know about it and everything else? Is that what?
That is the way that it's drafted, that yes, you would have to pay a fee for that. I think the alternative would be that maybe fees only apply to buildings that are also abandoned, so they meet those other criteria. I mean, that could be a policy consideration on your part, but right now, it would be a fee.
So that's my sticking point.
So how do, how do you know the difference? What, what's, so, so the point that I would raise on the vacant buildings is, when I read this, the understanding is that because it's, when we have vacant buildings, there's additional workload on the city to try to inspect those, make sure that they're safe, they're secure. You know, some of these buildings are still required to have functioning sprinkler systems of one type or another in them. So I guess, how do you know the difference? I, I have a building, whether I just own it and it's vacant, whether someone's paying a lease on it and they moved out and it's vacant, isn't the issue the same about determining if all the codes are being met?
Yes.
Right? So I, so that's, to me, I would say it doesn't matter because the, the, it doesn't seem to me there's any more likelihood that there'll be code violations if someone's stopped their business and moved away and the building's vacant, as if somebody owns it and just no one was in there and it's vacant. It's, it's still the same amount of work to inspect it and make sure that it's safe and secure and all of those types of things.
If, if I own a building and I'm paying my property taxes and it's up to code and I follow whatever, you know, if you, I don't know how often, whether there was somebody in it or not in it, how often the building's inspected by the city for whatever code. If it doesn't violate any codes, it's empty, I'm paying for it, I'm paying the city my property tax, why am I getting charged anything for that?
So if we just talk about a single, just say a single-family home. So if you have a single-family home that's vacant, the, the call volume that that single-family home generates for the city, whether it's because of a code issue because, you know, somebody broke in and there's a door open or whatever it might be, or PW has to go and secure the building because we can't get all the property owner, those are all those added costs. Or, like we saw several years ago when housing market wasn't great, we had all these vacant buildings, every one of them were being stripped out of copper, there was, I mean, our call volume increases, so the likelihood of that vacant building generating a police response is greater. Generating a code response is greater. And so, so if it's that home, and I think it's $100, right, for the first six months, so, so it's going to be $200 for that year, but it caps, how many times? Three?
Over the course of two years, so 16 would be about, it could be $1,600 over the course of-
For that single family.
Correct.
So it's about the-
To me, that's an abandoned building. Like, because I bought houses during that time period.
Yeah.
They were abandoned buildings that were, to me, they maybe, maybe not had their plumbing, you know, the, the pipes burst and maybe they were winterized and people said they were, and they had a company that would maybe go once a quarter and check on the building. To me, and it's in disrepair. That is what this ordinance is to address, I would think. But if somebody is, if the lawn's getting mowed, if, you know, the building is being maintained, we shouldn't be charging them anything for that. That's my belief, that's my feeling. I mean, you can tell if you drive down the street and you know that the building's empty and there's three feet of grass in the lawn and, and there are starting to be vagrants in there, and you try and call the homeowner and you can't get in touch, that would, to me, that would be, to me, that's something that would have to instigate the charging of people. Because if I choose to own a house in, in Auburn and I go to Florida for 362 days a year, and I, because I want to come home for Christmas and live in my house for three days, and then go down and hire someone to take care of the property, why am I paying you anything more? Why am I paying the city any more for that? I shouldn't have to, I'm paying my taxes and I'm being responsible, and you know who I am. That's my feeling on it. There's a difference between vacant and abandoned, in my, my opinion. A vacant is, there's responsible ownership, and abandoned means it's irresponsible ownership, whether or not they think they're being responsible about it.
There, there is some criteria under vacant buildings that wouldn't fall under abandoned buildings as well. So in order to be determined an abandoned building, we'd have to, you know, I think there's, there's nine points, and it only has to be one of those, but with a vacant building, they may not, you know, a commercial building may not have the sprinkler operational, but it's, it wouldn't be classified as an abandoned building, and we'd need to go in there to verify this, to make sure these things are put in service so that the neighborhood, the community is safer. I certainly understand your point, but-
And I'd start certainly thinking a mandatory inspection, and maybe, maybe that's, there's a once-a-year fee, maybe that's what this is for. Responsible, you know, vacancy, you know, to a responsible vacancy situation so that the city, but does make sure that no one's in there, or they can provide a report that it's inspected or something like that and waive any of the fees? Something along those lines, you know? Because I agree, we know, we have to know that the fire suppression works, and we have to know that it's secured, and, and I think, you know, the first responder issue is something that's there, but that's just my concern with the, with the whole.
Council, what do you?
You mentioned the waiver, and I wondered what the council's appetite might be for language that would call for a waiver for good cause. I mean, I hate to create a lot of bureaucracy, but you could have an, an appeal process where a case like you've cited, they could ask for a waiver and it could be granted by Eric or somebody.
Yeah, it would be cleaner from a staff perspective, just to make sure we define exactly what we want to regulate. I think it'd be hard to make individual decisions fairly about waiver process, but it is when the vacant building crosses that line and doesn't have responsible management and starts to deteriorate is when the call volumes really jump, but it's trying to, to make sure we can prevent it from crossing that line and that we have good contact information for the owners when things do occur that we're trying to accomplish by also having that information for vacant buildings that aren't yet abandoned.
I support the concept, just so you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, I support the idea. I'm just trying to, I want to make sure we don't sweep somebody into there that's a good citizen that's paying very high property taxes already. You know, that you're going to, you're going to find me too for just keeping my house and my yard clean and going to Florida for six months a year?
Maybe there's no fee for vacant, but we still get the contact information.
Is there a way to address kind of lessening the burden on the vacant building? Obviously, I understand the abandoned building, I think, there's nothing that I really take issue to with that in ordinance as it's written. Is there a way to deal with vacancy through fees tied to the response? I think about all the false alarms that my business throws off on Hotel Road. Fire comes the first time, I think it's free, after that, we pay this, then we pay this, and then we keep paying until we fix that. I wondered if with the vacant buildings, there's a way to deal with it in the response fee, or if that is its own can of worms with difficult logistics and record-keeping? Just for vacant buildings?
I think there is an opportunity, but as I sat back there, one of the things that struck me is whether there's a hybrid solution, and what I mean by that is, rather than a, is there a nominal registration fee for vacant buildings, which requires that we get the information and a nominal fee that would help fund an annual inspection of that building? That annual inspection could actually drive us to finding when the building transitions from vacant to abandoned, and then the abandoned structure kicks in once it's determined to be abandoned from those inspections. So to offset some of those costs, you know, it's a, I don't know what it might be, but it's a fee enough to offset the cost. If it's vacant, we want to look at it each year to be sure all of those systems are still in place, and we offset that cost, and then that inspection would help give us an idea when it breaks the threshold of being abandoned, meaning poorly maintained, lack of systems, those types of things. So we're, both are included in the ordinance, but it's not a heavy punitive type of fee structure for the vacant side, but rather just a cost offset.
In addition to that, I wonder if, so in the cases that you go in and you do an inspection, could there be something that is no longer in code, but it would still be under the definition of vacant, and so that, do you want to build in a time period that that gets corrected before you start having escalating costs, or?
So that's already included in the ordinance. If they go and do an inspection, whether it's vacant or not, and there's a code violation, there's already a process to provide them notice and remediate that. And then, leave aside the fee part of the, what the chief is suggesting, the ordinance as it's written, this draft right now, triggers the differentiation between vacant and abandoned upon the inspection, based on what the inspector sees. So that concept's already built into this. I think what the chief is suggesting is that there's just a flat fee for vacant buildings as opposed to some escalation of fees.
As long as it doesn't also become to meet the definition of abandoned.
Well, yeah, sure, or, or they don't remediate code violations. Right? Because that has its own path, whether it's vacant or abandoned.
Which means the question we're asking ourselves is, and I think this gets to Steve's point, is the message to an abandoned building owner is different than the message to a vacant building. Right? The, the message to an abandoned building owner is, fix this, because the penalties will escalate. The message to a vacant building owner is, you're allowed to do this, there's a nominal annual cost to have a vacant building, but you can do this forever, we're, we allow it, it's not our right to tell you not to have a vacant building. So, so there are two different messages, I think. I, I think, I think they're already partially captured in the ordinance, I just think it's about punitive financial damages to the vacant building.
I mean, I can think of a particular building on my former wife's street that is vacant all the time, but I know the property manager's truck, the lawn's always mowed, the yard's always cleaned, the, and the people that own it use it, or occasionally, I think they have like a, for holidays, they'll have family coming and use it, and it's right down the street from where they live. That's what I'm thinking about, where those people shouldn't be penalized for doing that. They're paying to upkeep the property. That's the situation, that, that's what's sticking in my head, and that's the, I, I already know what the property manager, I know what the property manager's truck looks like, because it's been years and years, and I've seen it there all the time, and I've always wondered what's going on, then I finally found out that it's, oh, it's somebody lives down the street and they've owned it forever, and they let people stay there when they come for visit. So that shouldn't be, you shouldn't pay any extra for that.
Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a set number of vacant and abandoned buildings? Does it pretty much hold even, or are we accumulating lots of them in a rapid rate?
We, we don't know, which is part of the registration, so we, this would allow us to understand how many there are, it would allow us to have contact information for them, if there is an incident or a broken window or an unsecured door. You know, I think I could safely say like around 2008, when we had the mortgage crisis, we had a big uptick in vacant and abandoned buildings. Now there's money in those rentals, and there's fewer of them now than there was then, but we don't, we don't know exactly how many there are. We just don't have a way to track them, we've never had a registration of any.
And the, I think the best numbers that we have, which may not be entirely accurate, are either the American Community Survey that the Census does, or the Census data itself, and they're ranging 5% to 10% of the, the dwelling units, not talking commercial, just residential dwelling units in Auburn being vacant. And I understand, Council Milk says a good point about the people that are maintaining it. I, I don't think that that's the typical case, and that's not what's driven other cities across the state to implement vacant building ordinances. I think we have to find a way to accommodate that, but I think we're going to find that the vast majority of vacant buildings, somebody's not paying to keep the upkeep of the building all the time.
I think in 2012, there was probably 175 properties for sale in Auburn, and half of them were in foreclosure of some sort, from 2008 to 2012. If there's 5% vacancy in residential real estate today, I'd be shocked, in Auburn. I'd be shocked with the price of reels, with the price of real estate. You, you're an insane person if you have a vacant house that you're not doing anything and you own it, and it's just, you're letting it rot. You're, you're a crazy person. I mean, because you could sell it for crazy money for a house that's broken down today. So in 2012, I'd have thought this, I would, I would be, this is a great idea because it's going to get the, the foreclosing banks to get on their, because they were just sitting back and not doing anything and letting it go years and years. I'm sure you dealt with those all the time in the police, in the fire department. It was probably a major pain, but there was, there was literally a couple of hundred houses like that, and I just don't see it now. I mean, I don't see any vacant houses. Not many, anyway.
And I don't know if it's, so if it was vacant, and you described a couple of scenarios going to Florida, or this family that uses it occasionally, if it was vacant but didn't have any code violations and didn't become abandoned, maybe there's, there's not an escalation in the fee, or there's no fee. I think that's what we're looking for from you.
Yeah, it seems to me like that's where we need to hover. And, and I mean, just to be able to move forward here, I think, I guess my ask is like, yeah, how far away are we from an ordinance where everything stays the same except there's an opportunity for that landlord who's actively maintaining a property, but they've just chosen their business model has that as vacant today, and for the next two, three years, how do we either allow them to get out of this process, or have an annual fee that is so nominal that it supports the inspection system? It's not a big ask to say, pay $100 a year, it funds your annual inspection, which we're going to provide every year, because I feel like that's the only gap we have to cover right now.
Keeps you on PD and Code.
Or a report.
People are looking out for your-
It sounds like the contact information is one of the big pieces for fire, so I want to make sure that we're getting as mu, I mean, even for the vacant building, even for the, the family that uses a third house, you know, whatever, like, great, let them do that, but they need to have contact info for, for fire, because that's where I think we're experiencing some pain at the municipal level.
Yes.
So a couple suggestions here. So I think what I'm hearing is, the definition that's in here now that was modified as we went along on vacant buildings is the 60 days, and I think what I'm hearing is, generally, buildings that are going to be vacant 60 days or more, we want to have some fee, we want to have registration, so we know who these people are, how to get ahold of them if there's an emergency, but we don't want an escalating fee. And if that's the case, perhaps we want to go back and separate the definition to what we originally started out with on vacant, because it was, I can't remember, you guys don't remember, it was like six mon, had to be vacant six months or more or something to kick into the fee. So I think that would help differentiate between people who, you know, go out of state for five months and come back, you want to have the information to get to them, and you don't want an exorbitant fee, but at some point, if it's just vacant all the time, then you may want to get into the, the escalating fee because you're going to have repeated issues.
And it, it shouldn't escalate in that situation where I go to Florida-
Right.
-for five months, because I would come back in May or April and I'd tell the city, we're here for the summer, and then if you let it go vacant again next year, then it would start over.
Yes, I mean theoretically, you could, we could register if people, if it's going to be vacant for, say, less than six months, just register it, no, no fee at all, right? Just have them provide the information so we know how to get ahold of them if, a week after they leave, something happens, and then if it-
Trees fall down.
Yeah, tree falls on the roof or something, yeah. So, and then if it's vacant six months or more, then start getting into the actual inspection and escalating fees. What, what's thoughts on that, Council?
I like that idea, I just wonder if we might want to extend that period a little bit? I'm thinking of those who want to live in Florida for six months and a day in order they're not paying taxes, you know, so if we only had a six, or maybe it's six and a half, something like that. But I, I do like that idea, that no fee, they register, and then if it's a scenario where you have, like you described, Council Milk, where it's maintained, but it's long, long-term, they could pay that annual fee for, for inspection.
Yeah, they could provide the contact information for the property manager that's maintaining the building, or whatever that would be. And I think commercially, it's going to be a lot easier to tell what's empty and what's not empty. If there's no commercial activity going on, then I think that we can be more aggressive on, you know?
We could change it-
Multifamilies can be more aggressive on. If it's vacant, it's a multifamily, I think we can be aggressive on that, because that's not a good situation.
That's a different situation.
That's a different situation than a single-family.
And we probably wouldn't want to post a notice on the single-family either, because you don't want to call attention to the vacancy in that for a second. We could work that in.
Yeah, we already have a pretty decent, probably working base of those who request vacant house checks through the PD. They already reg, they already submit a form, they already register, so I think there's some communication that we can do with those that do that, that that would require, we require this, and then, and then we can work out whether it's a-
I didn't even realize people do that, so that's, that's a great, if you registered with the police department, like, waived.
Yeah, it's just part of the registration. As long as it's less than that, six months and a day.
And that's viewed as a great service for the homeowner rather than an infringement of their property.
Your police officers are going to love you, they, they tell them, go get an alarm and don't make me go out there and walk around the house in the snow. Having done that, right?
You just look for footprints. No, no footprints, no, I'm joking.
Okay, you get, you get your detective badge back.
Oh, you get a badge, okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments on this?
So registration after 60, but no fee for single-family homes, and then unless they're vacant for more than seven months, that- And then, unless they're vacant for more than seven months, that... We can incorporate.
Yeah, and they start... And they go to an abandoned state, which means, you know, the grass is high, disrepair. You know, that type of thing, yeah.
All right. So, this will come back to you for... I think we've got enough. So, it'll come back for first reading at the next meeting.
Anything else on this? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work on this. So, the next item is Munis Open Finance Update. And a bit of background on this for the council and the public. So, lots of people in the public probably won't understand the acronym. So, Munis is the enterprise software system we use to run city government, including finance. And the Open Finance is their portal application. The council will recall that in the past, there was an attempt to create a public portal that provided some budget information that the public could see. And you'll recall a year ago, when we were working the budget, we found that there were some issues with it, including some inaccurate data. So, Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Earl with their respective teams in IT and Finance went to look and see what can we do to have a better solution, both to have broader information available to the public and something that was more reliable in real time than what we had before. So, ladies, happy to have you given overview for the council.
Okay, so the Open Finance Platform, the purpose of it is to provide that real-time data as the mayor had mentioned. It's specifically for our financial data. So, it's not a budget portal like the previous portal was. It's so that you can see the detailed breakdowns of revenues and expenditures. So, it's the ins and outs. So, revenues that we receive, you'll see those. Expenditures, like payments that we make, you'll see those. So, it has some visual... visualization... Wow, that was rough. Tools like charts and graphs that make it a little bit easier to read. If you recall, that budget portal was very number-driven. And if you like numbers, it was great. But, if that's not in the world you live, it was a little bit harder to read. It also has some searchable options for you. So, if you're looking for something specific, you can actually use a search bar for that. So, it does simplify the process for everyone to be able to look at some of this information. Provides that central location for this information. And it makes it so that you, as the elected officials, can make some data-driven financial decisions. So, similar in the way that the monthly finance reports are given to you, except that you can actually drive and dive down a little bit deeper if you so choose. So, those financial reports that I give, give an overview and kind of a bulk number and general information. And this can provide some detail. And if you have any questions, of course, you can reach out to the city manager or assistant city manager. We can provide additional information. So, this is the main page and what it looks like. And Jill will walk through this with you.
So, we just did a... I did a quick overview video for you to see. You'll get the link tomorrow from Phil or Dennis regarding the login information. So, this just kind of shows you the main page, has some summary information on it. They have some built-in graphs that show location information, the top vendors that we pay, revenue information, breaks it down by budget function. And then, at the bottom is just a couple of quick links for the city website so you can get back there. And then, this just kind of shows how it can go into the budget. So, up at the top, there's a bar that'll show the budget, revenue, and expenses. This is just going to bring you into the expense side of it. This is what it'll look like. It breaks it down by fund, department, or object. From there, it's just a quick link to a specific department. So, on the side over here, I picked fire and EMS. It broke it down. And it just kind of gives you the ledger information within the general fund for that department. Breaks down salaries and all of that. It's a little bit easier, more intuitive to use. Gives you a lot more information. This is expenses, so your budget and your expense information. And then, you can go back to the main page. That's what we have. Any questions?
Questions from the council? So, make sure my understanding of this is correct, right? So, starting with a new budget, this will be available somehow through a link through the city website, correct? So that the public can have access to the information?
I think initially...
I probably covered that, Jill.
Go ahead.
So, we're going to start here. We're analyzing the data. What we want to make sure is that we don't have the same glitches that we had in the last system. So, a lot of this has to do with what's going into the system. What we're... How are we entering it? And so, yes, it's going to be... You know, right away, it'll be open for you. And then, as we look at this data, I want to make sure we at least have a good 30, 60 days here. Take a look at that. Make sure it's hitting... We'll do our own internal audit. We pay individuals, say, for general assistance or for really general assistance. That's really the biggest issue. And there's times when there's data that gets on those entries and we want to make sure that that's not happening. And so, I want to make sure we've had a little bit of time to audit that and then it'll be available on the website.
Yeah, the personally identifiable information that is visible to staff should not be visible to public when it comes to general assistance. So, previous practice of entering things in a certain way, we have to change that practice so that that information isn't visible to everyone. A last name attached to an address, things like that, that's protected information. We have to make sure that that's not out there.
Right. And can you go back to the header page? So, my understanding, I just want to make sure this is correct. Under the budget side, people will be able to review and drill down on both revenue and expense side. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, the two other areas would be basically payables, right?
That would be an expense.
Right. But, they'll be able to drill down through...
Yeah, there is a vendor. You can drill down by vendors.
Okay. And then, on the payroll side as well, it's not by person, but it's by position. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Can you perhaps... I know you don't want to get into anything that has problematic data, but are you able to show the council what this looks like and the public from not just the expense side, but the revenue side, vendor payments, payroll?
Sure. Is there a particular area that... or just anything? So, general fund revenues. This breaks it down by general government, education. So, you can... Can you see it?
It's pretty tiny.
It is little.
So, you can click down into something. So, you say, "Okay, I wanted general government. Now, I want to look into general administration." "All right, now I want to see what finance revenues are." And that's where she is now, okay? I can see how much we've collected in property tax revenue so far. Things like that, you can actually see. When Jill's described an object, in our world, an object is that account description. So, for finance, we have an account object of tax revenue. So, that's what this section is. Those objects is just that breakdown.
I have a quick question. How would we... Excuse me. How would we best compare year over year? Would we be asking you to pull data from the old system on years past and then have to manually match things up?
So, year over year would be a financial report we would run. So, this is really for real-time current data, more so than for year-to-year comparison, which we can always provide.
So, it's real-time data, but after FY '26, you'll still be able to go back and look at the prior year budget. You just won't be able to run like a comparison between the two. But, you'll still be able to act... So, this first year, when this is opened up to the public, they'll be able to see real-time what's happening in the budget for FY '26. When we get into FY '27, if they want to go back, oh gee, I wonder what was going on last year, they could go back and look at the prior year's data, correct?
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we have two executive sessions tonight. No action is expected to follow from either one of these. The first is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405-6D for labor negotiations for the fire unit is our motion. Moved by Counsel Walker.
Seconded by Counsel Cowan.
All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The council will be in executive session. The council will be in executive session.
The June 2nd, 2025 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward 1 City Councillor.
Evening. Tim Cowan, Ward 2 City Councillor.
Good evening. Steve Milks, Ward 3.
Good evening. Jeff Heimann, Mayor.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Councilman, Ward 5.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Good evening. Anaya Eddy, Student Representative.
Good evening. Ubarek Abdullahi, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you very much. The first order of business tonight is approval of the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 regular City Council meeting. Are there any edits or changes to the minutes? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Moved by Council Walker.
Seconded.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Platts. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Those opposed? Six having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. There are no communications, presentations, or recognitions this evening. We'll move on to our first open session. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We have one item of unfinished business, Order 2803172025, adopting the revised joint purchasing policy. This item passed on first reading on March 17th, 2025. This is for second reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
By Council Walker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Cowan. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Council ready?
I guess I would just make one comment that, parallel to our deliberations on the school side of things, there have been motions to also approve the joint spending policy on the school side. So the work we're doing on the city side is being matched on the school side as well, with definite changes that fit this ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
Right. So it actually went through, the school has three committees that this policy went through after it went through the first reading, and it passed each of those committees. So the school is completely on board with it. School committee voted, and they've approved this change. Just waiting for council's final approval to make those official changes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The motion's adopted. We'll move on to reports. So a few items from the mayor's report. Mr. Brencheck from Economic Development has continued to set up tours of manufacturing and industrial businesses in Auburn, and we toured Savage, which most people probably still call safe handling. Number of staff and councilors there is very informative. Since we last met, some of the staff and some of the councilors attended the LA Chamber of Commerce Awards. Very well-attended function. We should recognize our city manager, who last week was named a Citizen of the Year by the Auburn Business Association. So kudos to the manager. The manager and I attended the AARP coffee at the Senior Center. It's a monthly event. They had asked us to come and speak to them about the budget and the impact on the senior programs. I had lots of great questions. I think it went well. I think they have a clear understanding that while the staffing mix will be a little different, that the same programs are being continued. Public Works Open House was great this weekend, despite the rain. You know, it seems like we've had a string of rainy city events, but I think that worked to their advantage with all the kids. Very well-attended, very well put on, very informative. Great job. Kudos to Public Works. The Fight Department was there as well, and folks from SNRB also. The Auburn School Department, the Edward Little multi-language learner class was here today, learning about City Hall and posing questions to the mayor that is part of their practice. They did a great job. It was very nice to have them here. An update, if folks haven't been out to Hershey Hill Road, you should take a drive out there. Excellent job by Public Works. The contract is a really bad road. They're just finishing that up, and they were starting to pave on another really bad road today on Blanchard Road. The Home for Good Project, which is the Housing First, the local, as I mentioned before, there was a kickoff meeting at Main Housing. The local groups' planning meetings started today. They'll have a meeting every three weeks. An update on the Comp Plan Committee. The last meeting was on May 27th, and the staff and the consultant provided the draft data analysis document. There's a community survey that I would urge everyone in the community to participate in. It is open until June 6. If you go to the city website, you'll see a comprehensive plan item on the left-hand side. If you scroll down a little, if you navigate to the project, you can take the survey. They will be having subcommittee meetings on the data analysis piece, which will be the basis for the discussion of the Comp Plan chapters. There's six of those scheduled in June. If you, again, navigate to the website, under the Comp Plan item halfway down the left-hand side, it'll show you the schedule. They're all at 6:00 PM in the community room across the hall. Again, there's six in June. And the next Comp Plan Committee meeting is, of the full committee, is June 17th here in the council chambers. And lastly, I would urge everyone to come out and vote. That hasn't voted by absentee. Come out on June 10th to vote on the school budget validation. There's a single polling place, which will be here at Auburn Hall from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 o'clock at night. That's all I have. Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of isn't a report, but I've been asked if at our next meeting, if we could get a revised update of what's happening at the 121 Mill Street property, as well as could we have a presentation on the Lewiston Auburn Transit new updated ways you can get your bus passes and stuff. Some of the seniors that aren't kind of computer or cellphone savvy, they're afraid they're going to be left out in the cold not knowing how to get a bus pass and stuff. I mean, it's fascinating. I saw a presentation online, but there's going to be half the public that rides the bus and that's not going to understand this. So if we could please have a presentation or something, maybe even something taped and put on our Great Falls TV channel that could be just run, and as people tune into it, they can catch it and know what they're trying to do. Even I will have trouble on this.
So the new contract, if my recollection is correct, starts October 1st. And so I see the manager taking notes. So we'll figure out what to do with that. I'm not sure they'll be ready by the next meeting, but the point's well taken to make sure that we have good public information about the changes when the new bus provider starts on October 1st. Council Whiting?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Went on a site walk with the Board of Main Mill, formerly known as Museum LA. They're coming along. It's going to be a really beautiful facility. They're in the early stages of construction, but it's going to be an exciting addition to the riverfront. And Auburn Public Library used to do a trivia night at Side by Each. That went by the wayside, but they're moving it to the Brew Pub at Lost Valley. I think they have one on June 10th at 6:30, if you're into trivia and good beer. And I think it raises a little money for the library. I'm not sure how that works.
Council Cowan?
Nothing tonight.
Council Milks?
Nothing for me.
Council Walker?
Thank you. I've had a couple requests that we would please get out the information on how we're going to take care of trash pickup. Are we going to, and when? The dates they're looking for, they're confused mostly on when are we going to start bringing the barrels into Auburn for them to have the trash barrel, and then when is it going to be done? So if we can maybe figure it in in the next couple meetings that we have, have some time to explain it. And then the last thing, the bulky waste. We got one more meeting here. So can we just tell people that I believe the end of June, bulky waste stops, unless you want to take it yourself and pay for it yourself? So we really need to get that information out. Then the last thing is, thank you, Mr. Manager, for coming to the United New Auburn Association meeting. All of the people that were there had a great, great evening. And again, as always, you had the most people come to the meetings to attend. So thank you again.
Council Platts?
Thank you. To reiterate, all those events that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, were great. The Public Works Open House was really wonderful. They did a really good job displaying what they do and seeing, you know, 30 kids running around getting their passports stamped around large equipment was pretty awesome. Two updates on the school side of things. A quick plug to the Adult Education graduation, which is happening this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Edward Little High School. So that's a great thing to go out and support if you can make it. And then, again, just to reiterate the mayor's point, Tuesday, June 10th is the day you need to get out and vote for the school budget. Yeah, get out and vote. It's important. We want to see more than a few hundred people coming out to support the school.
Representative Eddy?
I just wanted to congratulate the class of 2025, both at Edward Little and in Lewiston. That's so exciting. And a special thank you to all of the staff. And I think Auburn Public Works helped too with moving our graduation inside over at Norway. So that was an awesome event, and I'm so glad that they helped us do that, because otherwise we wouldn't have been able to have as many people as we did. So yeah.
Representative Abdullahi?
June 7th, there's going to be a mental health bike ride in downtown Lewiston. It's going to be sponsored by Rainbow Bikes and the Bike Shop in Portland. So if you're interested, you can come down. And the bikes that you ride, you'll get to keep also, and the gear too. So, you know, June 7th is going to see it downtown Lewiston.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot's been said about what's going on, but I would add on regarding the ELHS graduation, the transformation of the arena. You know, that was done basically Friday afternoon when they made that decision. So huge transformation, but school maintenance, PW staff and the Norway Arena staff really outdid themselves. You know, the graduation went into evening, so they even thought to make sure that they had lights, portable lights set up, because there was a lot of spill over parking lot down in the Auburn Mall parking lot. So that way they had that crossing, walking that distance was well lit, great safety, about 2,400 in attendance in that arena. So a great, great turnout and a great use of an amazing facility as well to be able to make that available for the high school. So that's all I have.
Ms. Farrell?
Everyone's gone so fast. So this is the report for the month ending April 30th. So we are looking into the past as always. There are no major issues to go over for this month. I would like to note that the fact that we've been budgeting closer to actuals and we're continuing with implementing efficiencies in all the departments, they are operating at expected or better expenditure levels, which is really great news for us. And I think that we've used that information, of course, in our budget process. So I think everyone's going to be able to see the benefits of all the work that the staff and council have been doing. So thank you.
Any questions about the finance report? Ms. Farrell? No? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the finance report.
Moved by Council Walker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six, seven voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The motion is adopted. We'll open the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There's no further business to bring before the councilors. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Council Milks. All those in favor? The council will be adjourned.